Ask to tell everyone that when we adjourn the meeting. Call this special May 30 meeting of the Santa Barbara City College Board of Trustees to order and ask those who wish to participate to rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, all trustees are here except for trustee Nielsen and student trustee Beschi, hopefully they will join us later in the meeting. And our interim superintendent president is not able to be with us tonight. We have our executive vice president of human resources, welcome.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are devoted toward a single topic, and that topic is the selection of our, our permanent superintendent president. And we have with us tonight to lead our discussion, our new consultant Pamela Fisher. Welcome Pamela.
Thank you.
And I should report to the, to the board that this afternoon at from 1:00 to 3:00, Pamela met with our screening committee and went over details. I participated in the first five or 10 minutes just to welcome them on behalf of the board and thank them for their service and introduce myself, tell them what an important task they have. And then Pamela took it from, took it from there. And I assume to some extent, this will be a reprise of what you went through earlier today.
Somewhat.
Somewhat. So with that brief, well, I can also report, I was told they, they elected a co-chair Pamela Stark, Tricia Stark.
Tricia.
Tricia Stark. And we will, we will also elect a co-chair maybe at the end of our meeting before we adjourn. With that, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. It's really nice to see you in person. In addition to seeing you during the interview process here a couple of weeks ago, I've also watched some of your meetings since then, including last week, as you interviewed candidates for the search committee. So it's really fun to see, oh, this is really, actually you look even nicer in person, I have to tell you that.[455.12][455.12](Laughter). I can really see you much better. But it was good for me to watch that process even last week as you went through that to see the interest that your community had and the kind of questions that you had for them. And I can report that two of the people you selected were there today. The gentleman from the non-credit student, did I get the title right? Did not, was not there today, but the other two were there and were very active participants and contributed really well. So that was very positive. So yes, we have some special work to do tonight. I want to update you on several things first, and then I want to put you to work. Our goal by the end of our time together, however long that takes, is for you to have, yes, selected the co-chair, that's probably the easiest part, but also to have made a decision about some topics related to minimum qualifications, because those are things that are your call and again, may not be that complicated, but I need your direction. And then the more intense and very important discussion is about what I call the heart of the profile or announcement where I will be asking you questions. A couple of you have already written to me, I know it hasn't been very long, so if you're not one of the ones who responded already, don't feel badly. Number one, you can respond tonight. And number two, if you're like me and you go home from tonight and say, "I should have said," then you can still write to me. So that, that's a wide open proposition. But let me back up just a little bit and tell you that the recruitment has begun in the sense that we've announced to people that your position is open and it's on our website. And so people are aware of it, people are starting to make inquiries about it. We call it, the way we describe it now is it's in the planning stages, so at least they're know the opening is there. Obviously, people in your close community know that, but people across the country don't know that and not even necessarily all across California. So that's already started. The other thing that happened this morning is I met with some of your staff, including Marcia and also Luce on audio phone and then your new director of HR, Cindy.
Cindy Correo.
Cindy and Angie. And we had a working meeting and I won't go into all of that for you except there's a lot of details of things that happen behind the scenes to get this started, including the development of the web announcement, the web, not just the announcement, but the web pages, some of the print ads, some of the logistics of what will happen when candidates come to campus, those kinds of details that you really need to get started now, even though they won't happen, some of those won't happen until early fall. So really good to work with all of them and it's my understanding that going forward, Luce will be my primary contact person, although we kept dragging Angie into it today in Luce's absence, but that she'll be the, what we call the search liaison, simply an onsite person that helps me with the things that can only be done by somebody that's a part of your campus community, which also means though that she'll be the onsite person should a question come up even from any of you and she's there in person immediately to answer. Although I do want to reinforce what I said to you during my interview with you that I am available to you basically 24/7. I'm, I am not, I don't ever turn my cellphone off unless I'm in a workshop, I will turn it off for a few hours, but I respond really quickly to texts and emails. So don't hesitate to reach out to me if you would like to do that. Our search committee meeting was lively, but went well. It was lively because there was a lot of differences of opinion about some aspects of it, but we reached consensus, I think. I've got a couple of witnesses here, oh, several witnesses now, they're seated behind me. I don't, I think you should be down here, not behind me. But we worked out, I think, all of those issues, so we're off and running. They understand their charge. I want you as a board to know that in addition to explaining what they're doing, I try very hard to be very clear about their charge, which is to follow your guidelines that you have provided about the timeline, about the, following the law, obviously, you'll see guidelines, but also the, following the profile, which is what we'll talk about a lot this evening, that our task is to find the very best people that meet that profile as close as possible. I said to them and I will say to you, most boards and their campus community come up with a list about this long and I, my word for it is the wow factor, which is simply walk on water. So we will do our best, when push comes to shove and you're making a final decision, you'll be looking at those finalists and saying, "All things considered, this is the one that comes closest to being what we need now." And what you need now might be different than what you needed four years ago or three and a half years ago. And what you need now might be different even than what, certainly different than what was needed 10 years ago. So that's a qualitative decision that you will make in the final analysis, but the committee has your, will have your direction about what they should be seeking in that. We also went over the details and I won't go into all of it with you except I think if you don't recall from our earlier conversation, ACCT will be handling all the applications from Washington DC. So the applicants apply online and they're kept in our offices there. We take care of contacting the candidates, tracking them, all of that kind of paperwork. Marcia didn't seem to mind what I told her that we would be doing that. The HR office will take the primary responsibility, although we offer as a consultant, the placing of ads and deciding what your budget is, where, when, and we had a good discussion about that this morning as well. The committee's work is essentially done now until we get to mid-September, which is when our target date is. I think you have the timeline, I don't know, do they have the timeline in front of them? No. Do you have it from?
You didn't send it to them.
Okay. Well, I mean, I will be sure to say it out loud then as I reference it, but the target date we have right now is September 16th. So between now and then, we'll be recruiting and the committee won't be having to do anything. Once we get the profile done and up on the website, you won't have to do anything, one exception for everybody, and that is if there's anyone you would like me to reach out to and encourage them to apply, I'm asking that, we call that a nomination, I'm asking that you send those to me. Just send me their name and their contact information and maybe one or two sentences why, why you're excited about them, but not a letter. Don't worry about your format or your grammar or anything else, just for me, because I will reach out to every single person that I am given as a so-called lead. And I'm encouraging the campus to do that, I encourage the committee to do that, and I certainly encourage you. May I recommend to you, and I hope this won't sound presumptuous, so if I get myself in trouble, just stop me and, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out, because sometimes a little bit of a provocateur here. If you see somebody you'd really like to see apply, say it's president at another institution, I am not at all opposed to stealing them, but I would strongly recommend you not encourage them to apply, that instead you let me know, let me call them and say, you know, you've been nominated and recommended, and I'll make my pitch. And the reason for that is you're, you're the final decision maker. If you personally invite somebody to apply, even though you don't mean it that way, I can tell you how they'll take it. It's like, ah, I've got her in my corner, she's going to vote for me, I guess I, I got a really, really good chance. I can keep you from doing that, but part of my role and what you selected us for is to give you what we think are best practices, and best practice is that you not personally recruit. Somebody comes up to you, which they may, may very well come up to you and say, "Hey, I see it's open, what do you think?" And, oh, your answer should always, "Oh, please apply, we welcome your application." The other question they might ask you is, is there an internal candidate? And I talked with this, with the committee too today. We stressed, I can't even tell you how many times my colleagues can vouch for me about the confidentiality. And if I'm asked that question, the answer is, I can't talk about who's applying. Well, can you tell me that there isn't one, so I feel better about applying? No, I can't tell you. We will not reveal any of that information and I would encourage you to do the same thing. In other words, I would hope you would hold yourself, well, one of you won't know anyway, so that'll make it easy, but they could say, well, do you think, do you have a strong internal candidate? Again, your answer is, we may, I don't, I don't know who's, you know, just, this is one time it's okay to sort of take the fifth, if you will, because you're the final decision maker, it's like you're the judge, you're going to make the decision in the end. So the more you can remove yourself from that part of it, the better. As I said, I'm thinking back to some of the things I said to the committee today, I really stress with them how creative sometimes our colleagues are trying to get information out of us. So they, I think we've headed that off there in that particular regard. On the other hand, you are ambassadors for the college, so yes, encourage people, you say, "Oh, we have an opening," if you're at a meeting of CEOs or you're, wherever, you're in a meeting and you want to stand up and say, "Just want to remind everybody we have an opening at the best institution in the," you know, whatever you need to say that won't get you in trouble with your colleagues, that's perfectly fine. The more we can spread the word, the better with respect to that. So between, again, once the profile is done, there will be a webpage, actually several webpages. We do not plan to, and we talked about that with staff this morning, but we do not plan to do a print brochure, we haven't done print brochures in years. And the reason is twofold. One, you saves you several thousand dollars by the time you print them and mail them to the whole world and, and most of them end up in the trash. But if you have a really attractive set of webpages that tell everything they want to know about the college, about the community, about the search, the timeline, the committee, everything, and how to apply, then every time we're talking with somebody or if you could stop by someone in the community, all you have to do is say, "Oh, just go to our website, you'll see it." Because we will ask them to put a banner of some kind on your homepage that directs them straight to that, paint those pages about the presidential search. And then everybody can see everything that we know. We try really hard to be transparent. A question came up today about, "Oh, I'm on the committee and my name was on there, why is that?" It's because we recommend that the committee be on there so everybody knows who the committee is. Why? Level playing field. Everybody knows who's on the committee. Now, if candidates start contacting committee members, the committee members know to turn them away or redirect them to me specifically and, and not engage, but at the same time, there's no secrets involved. It's not like some people know some information and others don't. So anybody that stops you and says, "What's going on with, with the search?", tell them what you know and then refer them to the website. And as we go forward, we will also include all the progress reports that are sent out over the next three or four months. Once they've gone out to the campus community, they'll go on the website. We'll start with the one that Dr. Benjamin sent out last week. And then as we go forward, we will have more going out. Under your president's name, we will help him with those letters, but we will send them out and then we will put them on the website so people can catch up. All the way, and the people who are really interested in their following, then they will see toward the end when we are ready for the open forums and they're invited of course to come and participate in those open forums. So again, try to be transparent while at the same time we're confidential about the things that we need to be confidential about. The profile itself, that's our terms, announcement, whatever you'd like to call it, is comprised of several parts. Toward the end of it, toward the end of it are the easy parts, how to apply, how to get ahold of me for information, and that's another reason you can refer them to me because then my, all my contact information is there for the world. How, how to do all of that. In addition is information about the college, your accreditation, your programs, how wonderful you are, your prizes, your awards. There's information about the community. So all of those parts that I just mentioned are pretty straightforward. Some of them come from our office, some will come from Luce's office, but there's not anything controversial within those. But then the real heart of the profile are these three things in the way we recommend you do it. And I do, let me say parenthetically, I know this is a little different than your last profile, your last announcement. The purpose is the same and some of the things are similar, but there's something that we would really recommend you do that was not included in the last one. So one part is the minimum qualifications, and that's where I'm going to start with you in, in just a few minutes, we'll come back to that. That's the part that you should decide, you should tell me tonight, yes, we like this set, want to keep it the same way it was, we want to modify it, and I'll, I'll walk you through that. And then there's a part called the ideal characteristics, everything you want, that's the walk on water part. And you had a long list in your last one, and I'm also getting, getting more input even now, not just from you folks tonight, but from your campus community. You may recall that Dr. Benjamin sent out a note, I think it was just Saturday night, to the campus community inviting them to address those two main questions, and I already have 40 responses, I had 40 responses by the time I left home yesterday, so it's probably more by now. So they've really responded to those two questions and I expect there to be a lot more. So the two sections that are in there, one is the ideal characteristics. We usually do it a little more, and this is not a criticism, so I'll be careful here, but a little more succinctly than it was in your last one, so that there's major categories and bullet points of the kinds of characteristics you're looking for. And then there's a portion that, it wasn't called out in your profile, I've read it several times, the one from last time, some of this is, was in there but buried, but we pull out a separate section and we call it opportunities and challenges. What are the big opportunities is the euphemism. What are the big challenges that City College is facing in the next three to five years? And perhaps the community is facing and the city and the college is part of that. Those might be things like fiscal challenges, new funding formula, et cetera. Almost always it's enrollment and figuring out, not just how to increase enrollment, but figuring out who do we serve and how do we make those decisions, but something about enrollment, almost always something about student success, almost always something about student equity and the achievement gap, may or may not be on your list. I can tell from the 40 responses I got, they're on your colleague's mind, and there are some other things I'll share with you as well. But by pulling out six, eight, 10, try to make 10 be the magic big number, of what we call major opportunities and challenges, it's the one place where we, we spell it out in a full sentence or two, and we highlight them, we're saying, "These are really important to this board and this college." Then when the candidate does their cover letter, which we ask them to keep it to five pages max, we ask them to relate or to respond to what we asked for in the opportunities and challenges and the ideal characteristic and minimum qual sections. In other words, tell us in your own words what you've done in those areas, what you have experienced, what you, perhaps how you might approach it, I'm cautious about that part, because hopefully they will share with you experiences and how they might approach it. I'm always suspect of people who say this is exactly what they will do to solve your problem, because I'd like to think they were open enough that they need to come and spend some time with you before they have the answer. But still, we're looking for indications that they understand the issue and that they've had some success in that arena already. So I'm stressing that one with you because it's not, and of course, I guess what, three of you were not here the last time? Is that correct? Who was here? Who are my veteran?
Everybody was, except for Kate and Robert.
Kate and Robert.
You mean during the last?
Yeah, in the last search, who was, so it would be?
Yeah, except for Kate.
It was just Kate and Robert.
Robert and Kate.
Okay, okay, okay. So because you didn't do this particular thing that time, although I suspect you did, it just didn't get portrayed that way in your profile. That's, that opportunities and challenges part, I think is the single most important of your, important part of your profile, and here's why. For the walk on water part, it's going to be at least 80 to 90% the same thing everybody else says, because everybody wants that. We want a communicator, we want them to be, reach out in the community, we want them visible on campus, we want honesty and integrity, we want them to be familiar with collective bargaining, we want them to respect AB 1725. I mean, pretty much, it's very, very similar. And the experienced or savvy potential candidate will read that list and will respond to it. They will mostly read it to see if you said anything that's different than everybody else says, because that gives them a clue that there might be an issue. For example, if you threw in dual enrollment, it would say, "Oh, okay." Not that there's a problem, but that's high on their list because they bothered to mention it. I'm just using that as an example. Or ESL, because you don't see references to that very much. Non-credit's a big issue for you, so my thinking is that's going to show up in the first list somewhere, and I'm not even sure how it should be written, because I'm not sure where you are, but again, I'm picking that up from some of the things I heard from your staff. So the ideal characteristics will do, will reflect whatever you say, where I need your creativity tonight and, and the next week or so, as you think about it, is on that opportunities and challenges. What are the really big issues that we're facing? So that's the three things we want to talk about tonight, and I'd like to go back to the easiest one, I think, that's always dangerous, huh, you jinx it when you say it that way. But I want to go back to that, and that's about qualifications. And by qualifications, I'm not talking about ideal characteristics, I'm talking about sort of paper qualifications, experience, degrees, positions held, things of that nature. The approach that you took last time, which is perfectly fine, it's the simplest and most conservative approach, which was simply, the language came out, and you have it, I think you have it in front of you or sent to you, it came out of the ad code. It simply says, "As established by blah, 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 the candidate must satisfy the following. An earned master's degree from an accredited institution," doesn't say in what, "one year of formal training internship, internship or leadership experience reasonably related and demonstrated understanding," and then that's the diversity, cultural, that one you don't play with, so that one needs to go just like it is because that's law. But with respect to the others, these are minimum quals, and you have the legal right, minimum quals means if you don't make it, you're out. As I said to the committee, if you don't make minimum quals, we put them in the discard pile. You have the right as a board to have there be more than that in the minimum column. For example, on the other side where you have desired qualifications, and the first one is an earned doctorate, some boards opt to put earned doctorate in the minimum. In other words, they want their, they're making a decision early on, they want their president to have a doctorate. So that's one of the questions I always pose to boards. Sometimes boards disagree, sometimes they don't, I don't pick you. I don't know which, and I'm enjoying all your beautiful flowers here in this, this part of the world, but it's also taking its toll. So that's one thing I want you to think about. There's pros and cons, and I can share those with you if you like. The one year, think of it this way, that ad code applies to every administrator in your congress, or congress. In your college, too much thinking about congress lately, actually I'm thinking about the ACCT congress, not our other congress, because we're working on that today too. This applies if you want to be a dean. In other words, these minimum quals are the same minimum quals if I want to be the dean of humanities. That's why some boards like to up the ante a bit for the presidential qualifications, but you may not. Talk about that. For example- For example, when you get over the desire beside the doctorate, there's the one about how much leadership experience have you had? Have you been a senior manager? And of course, the other issue is have you have some experience in higher ed? You can go, you want them to have had experience in community colleges, or you can make it be broader and say in higher ed, which obviously including the university, or you can not mention that at all, and it can, they can come from the corporate world. The corporate world one is, is a reach, I will tell you, we've not had good luck with that. Once in a while, we'll get some candidates. I don't think I've had a single one survive a search committee yet, because you, unless, but then they would meet it anyway, if they've been in higher ed and then went into the corporate world and are coming back. But, that's up to you. The doctorate narrows your pool, but if you want a doctorate, you're sending the message, we need a doctorate or don't apply, so you may or may not want to do that. So, the masters widens the pool. The more experience, if you put, that you want senior level experience, or you try to put a number on it, that will narrow your pool, but narrows it down to the people that perhaps are what you're looking for with more experience. And then, of course, the community college, higher ed, if you open it up to the whole world, I will tell you, you'll probably get twice as many applicants, but they won't be qualified. So, that's your call. It'll just be up to the committee to sort through those and find the ones where they think the skills generalize enough to fit to be the president of your college. So, there's pros and cons to all the above. The easiest way, and I'm not recommending this, but the easiest way out is probably to keep what you already have. But I would be remiss if I didn't at least say to you, if they only met those minimums, and minimums are minimums, we know that, but if they only met that, they're not going to be nearly ready to be a president of an organization like yours. Yes?
I need some qualification, or not qualification, but advice. Because sometimes, sometimes an applicant's paper presentation differs dramatically with reality.
Oh, yeah.
And what I was thinking about was, what if we, instead of having minimum qualifications, why not have preferred qualifications, which would open it up to a wider section, I think?
That's sort of, the only, if you look at what you have from before, that's what you're doing in the desired column, because the first one, you don't have the option of changing that to preferred, because that's law. So, you have to, you have to use the term minimum quals. You have, what, the only place you have discretion is you can make them tougher than they already are, but they have to be at least this tough. So, if you changed it to preferred, that implies you prefer them, but they don't have to have it, but they do have to have it. For example, and then where that first one comes from, they cannot supervise faculty if they don't have those. So, but if you like the word preferred over desired, actually, I like the word preferred better than desired, but that would be your second column.
Okay. I guess what I'm thinking of is that somebody might very well have the doctorate and have all of these other minimum qualifications, and, and I would have difficulty selecting that person for anything.
I agree with you. And you will have, you may, you know, I told you before, you will probably have sitting presidents apply for this, and there will be some you would not want. So, so this doesn't mean you're going to want them, it just means do they get to throw their hat in the ring?
Okay.
And you might very well have somebody who is not a sitting president, but is a very successful vice president or, or vice chancellor somewhere, who you will just absolutely love. So, this is first step. Once they've met the minimum quals, they get to be in the pool, then the search committee's going to look very closely at that whole package. Do they even talk about the things? Are they knowledgeable, do they know what's going on in the legislature, you know, all that good stuff? And they're going to narrow it down to, you know, six, seven, eight people, and so a lot of those kind would just simply disappear. And then when they interview them, then they'll have the experience you had.
Okay.
Now, it's, they always ask today, how much can I vouch for the ones that we will interview at the first level? Anything we know about them, we will share with the committee, but we cannot do any reference checking on them at that point when they're one of forty or fifty or sixty applicants. But once they've been invited to be interviewed, then we do, which a lot of firms don't, we do a preliminary reference check right then, so that when they come and are interviewed at that first level, if there's some major issue, we're going to at least know about it. We may not know all the details, because at that point, the only ones we can call and talk to are the people that they put on their list, and we get permission from them to be able to call them, and we, of course, do the internet searches and things like that, so we have some sense of what's going on if we don't already know. So, the committee will have some information about that. I heard some stories and concerns today about somebody getting all the way to the finalists before there was information. That's not going to happen. However, the committee might very well invite somebody for the first level interview, and I'm sure you've all been there, five minutes into the interview, it's like, okay, when's this one over? This, this will never work here, just never work. And that, I, we try to keep that from happening, but I can't guarantee it, because there'll always maybe somebody we have not yet seen in person. So, the kind that you're talking about that look good on paper, don't look good in person, the committee should have weeded those out. You should never have to see those. And, yes?
A couple of things. One, one is, we, to best of my knowledge, we didn't have this conversation, it was not opened up to us as an option to talk about both MQs and desired qualifications.
Oh, so this wasn't your set?
This was not ours.
Okay. Well, it's a point of reference.
Personally, I do like the idea of having it broad enough that you can bring in people who, well, really the broad pool, that, that the people you eliminate with a doctorate may cut back on your diversity options, the people that...
You mean the people without a doctorate?
Correct. If you require a doctorate, then I think you are screening to a certain level still. And the other issue, I think, is I have always been in favor of at least trying to get, see if there's anyone in the corporate sector who fits, and, and considering that as a possibility. Because in, although academic institutions are very unique and California community colleges are unique, there are important aspects of what we do that really are very businesslike or should be, so.
And there's no doubt about that, about the businesslike part, that's a lot of us, you know, that's almost a dirty word to use on campus, but the reality is, the person that's leading your institution has to have that, all that savvy as well. The challenge comes in, and I'm not arguing for or against, the challenge comes in, that person understanding, not so much the issues of higher ed, but somewhat, it's the mission and it's shared governance. Those are the two things that get them in trouble. And we've, we've had in the last twenty, thirty years in California, I can think of two, three, maybe, maybe there's more that I'm not aware, but maybe two or three that came from elsewhere, and one of those actually came from State University, so really can't even call that corporate. But it didn't work out, but it was because of some of the reasons that we're, that we're talking about. But if you do that, if that's your pleasure, that's absolutely what we can do, what I would, since you said you're not really wed to these anyway, I would put in the preferred qualifications, something about, or if we, if we use preferred instead of desired, something about a demonstrated understanding of the mission of the community college. It might be somebody who'd been on a community college foundation for a long time, for example, or something. I mean, there's got to, they, they need to understand we're not Santa Barbara University of California, for example. There's a difference, the mission is different. But that's certainly your call, that's why I'm asking you. And so, the degree and how widely open it is, and I guess the other third part of that is how much senior level, I assume you don't want someone to come in who has never been an administrator of any kind, anywhere. I, you have to tell me, but you're really brave if you are, but that'd be your call.
That makes sense. I mean, we're looking for real leadership here. I'm just open to, from my point of view, to try to broaden the qualifications. I'm told by other folks who've been through this process that pretty much the first place they look is that preferred qualifications, to see what we are saying in there. And so, the message we send there is pretty important.
It is.
One thing that I think is important is ability to work with the board, because I, I sent this to you in the email, but my perception is that the superintendent's relationship and how they work with the board trickles to the entire college, because bad relationship can turn really sour for everyone else. So, I think the one year in the minimum is, I don't know, personally, I would do it two or three years, maybe two of the senior leadership experience, but maybe in the preferred we can put three. I don't know how people feel about that, but I wouldn't want someone green sitting up here, it's like they've never sat at a board table before, never had to interact with a board before.
Now, you do understand that unless they are sitting president in California, superintendent president, you realize California's the only place that uses that term. So, if I leave superintendent out regularly, I apologize ahead of time. We, that's a carryover from K-12, and we haven't gotten rid of it yet. But anyway, unless they are a president that reports to a board, not a campus president, they will not have reported to a board. But if they've been a vice, for example, as a vice president, or even a campus president's, well, like Dr. Beebe, he didn't report to a board. So, you have to be careful how you word it, so you don't rule them out, but familiarity with working with the board, understanding the principles of boardsmanship, all those kind of things, and that could become, it could be in your preferred column, but I'd recommend, and if it's high on your list, I'd put it in that opportunities and challenges, namely, looking for someone who is, can be, is effective, working with a locally elected governing board, and can establish good relationship, whatever, however we decide to word that, and, and make it one of those kinds of things as opposed to a qualification per se. Because if you put it as a qualification, I'll tell you what'll happen. Back to your point, they read that, nobody puts that in that column. If you put that in that column, guess how they're going to read that? Oh, there's some problem with that board, that is such a problem board, that they put it in their preferred qualifications, you'll probably scare people away. But you still can have the concept, but in another part of the profile. And by the way, I should tell you, since I get to watch your meetings, and this is not a comment on your meetings, so don't get me in trouble, my first time in person here, the number one question savvy candidates ask me, you are, you know, tell me about the board. That's the very first thing they want to say, tell me about the board, what are they like? Do they get along? Is it a divided board? Is it a contentious board? Does the board understand their roles? You have to remember that most of my work is working with boards in retreats and workshops. So, I get those kind of questions immediately, and what any good candidate's going to do is watch your meetings. They probably would go back to about the time the search was announced, probably at least to the one where you interviewed firms for the search, and then last week, and then everything that happens between now and when they would fill out their application. So, just keep that in mind as an aside. But to your point, it could certainly go on the list, but I don't think I'd want to put it in that.
Maybe not even like board experience, I, I, I understand what you're saying there, but I think just one year of senior leadership experience is just like clearly, like we would, someone who just became a college president is not going to come up here and be superintendent, so.
I agree with Jonathan on that point. When I read that, I can't imagine us selecting someone with only one year, I would expect us to see at least three years.
Well, it is, and then the one year doesn't even say senior. You see, I, I personally, you go with the masters to be open. If you, if you, if you, if you're not, and you, actually, even this one does not, I just realized, this one doesn't, this one does not preclude the corporate, because your reference to higher ed is in the preferred column, not in the, so this one is already doing that. But back to your point, I like to see in the minimum quals, significant experience in an executive level position.
Yeah.
You know, so, and then we can argue whether significant is two, three, four, or five, but at least it gives them pause that, I, I just became department chair, I've been department chair for a year, so now I'm going to apply for president. I don't think that's quite the message you want to send, I don't think, but, you know, that's why I'm here tonight, so.
I, I would agree with Jonathan that, you know, hiring a person with very little experience or even none as a, as a president is probably problematic for us, but at the same time, the way you just phrased it helps. The board issue, you know, there's different types of boards. I wouldn't go with elected board necessarily, but, you know, in the corporate world, it's a different, you know, it's a different situation with the foundation, it would not be elected, I mean, you know.
I guess, even when, you're absolutely right. When I use that example, though, I wasn't talking about as a qualification. I was saying, part of the issue over here is, the new person will be expected to work well with an elected governing board. Where, how they learned it, where they experienced it, we don't care, but they should know the difference. And, and a community college higher ed board is different than even a school board. I think some of you have been on the school board, right? Yeah, I thought so. So, it's different. And certainly it's different from being on the city council, or a board of directors of United Way, or the women's shelter, I mean, you can have board experience, and they should talk about that, to your point. And, but we're not, if we're not making it be a qualification, we're just saying, we expect you to be able to come in here and perform, and not act like, you know, the deer in the headlights. So, in order to make sure we're capturing things, did we have some consensus that we stick with a master's degree and not, and keep the doctorate in the other column?
I'd like to hear more discussion about that. I, I appreciate what Marcia said, and that, that resonated with, with me, but before I came to the meeting, I was thinking, I wanted to know more about, can, can a college president gain the respect of, of all those PhDs who they're working with?
That they're supervising?
That they're supervising. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't have enough experience in this realm to answer that, but, but obviously the position requires, you know, as part of the shared governance, requires, you know, tremendous amount of respect with the people they're working with, so, and I know not everybody they work with will have a PhD, but it's predominant, I think. So, I, I guess I'd like to hear Dr. Hasland's comment on that.
No, I, I would, I, I think we, we'll, if we list it as a minimum qualification, for such a person, there'll be other offsets that say to us, yeah, that's our person, whether they have the degree or not. I know a lot of people with PhDs, and some of them are good friends of mine, but they, you know, they wouldn't be right for this position. So, what I guess I'm saying is, it's, it's, it shouldn't be seen as the single variable that would, the absence of which would disallow that person to make a...
Have we had presidents in the last decade or so, or longer, that have not had a PhD?
John did, did John, John didn't have a PhD? Did John Romo have one? John Romo?
John Romo, yeah.
Anthony started with that one.
No, he has, he has two.
He had one, he got two.
Got two.
He had an EDD and then got a PhD.
Yeah.
But John Romo would be a really good example.
And he was fabulous.
I, I think, I, I, I just have experienced a number of people who would be, would be very good in a position, and, and they just don't have the degree.
And that's, you've just capsulized, both of you, the argument that is there. People, a new president has to earn respect.
Yes.
So, she or he can come in and, okay, people are still going to be, unless they were part of the search committee and already fell in love with them, they, people are going to be skeptical, they're going to have to earn their respect, and so I think they can. Sometimes boards are more concerned about the external community than the internal community about the doctorate. They say, I just did one in another state in their university, and the university of the state is in the same community, and they said, look, when our president is standing up next to their president, testifying before the legislature, we want them to say Dr. so-and-so just like they're saying Dr. so-and-so over here. So, sometimes it's more a matter of public perception on the outside. I will tell you, it's not a huge deal, and I would not recommend you have too much angst over it. You cast the wide net, and it'll take care of itself. And if, you actually hit the nail on the head, too, Trustee Hasland, that the person without a doctorate comes in with a bit of a disadvantage, and then what they have to do is prove to you they are so good, it's okay that... And then what they have to do is prove to you they are so good, it's okay that they don't have it.
Right.
And they have to prove to the committee, first of all, and then prove to you. So if they can prove that to you, if you get down to the wire and you're, you love two people and that's the only difference, I'd say that's, that's not gonna make the difference. It's gonna be something else about who they are, what they believe in, what they've done, and you can take care of it yourself. I will, at the same time, be candid and tell you that I've had very few masters holding candidates be selected. The competition's great enough now, and there's so many of the others out there. It used to be, and I'll be careful about my choice of words here, it used to be that sometimes our candidates of color, who did not have a doctorate, could get selected, but others didn't. Now, that's not so much the case. Maybe that's because we've been doing a lot of work in the last 10 or 15 years, and we have lots of candidates of color with doctorates. So it's become less of a diversity issue, but it's still a wide net issue. So cast the wide net and then see what you think. And, you know, committee will screen them for you, and then you'll be able to decide from there. I don't think that's a really big issue either way. I more hope that you'll go with the requirement in the minimum column of significant senior level experience, of some kind of executive administrative experience.
I like that language, rather than three years.
Yeah, I don't like years either.
Because what is it that's so magic about three years? Why not three and a half? Why not four or three?
As soon as it happens, you're gonna fall in love with somebody who has two and a half.
Exactly.
Or you won't, because you won't see them, because the committee will have ruled them out.
Right.
But it'll happen with the committee, and yeah. That leaves us open. And then sometimes then the committee will ask me, well, what's senior? Generally, senior mean, if, if it's higher ed, because corporate will have to figure that out. If it's higher ed, it generally means they're at least part of the president's cabinet, the senior level. And they might not even have the title vice president, but they are a dean reporting to the president. Something that gets them closer to the decision-making power. And back to the earlier comment about a board, something that would be likely to have brought them into executive session once in a while, or to present to the board, or, you know. Not that the board on their campus would never, ever have seen them, then that's not senior, for sure. So, but it gives us some flex, and it gives you flexibility when you make the decision.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with that. I think that works because I can't imagine if we said senior executive experience, that somebody with only one year as described here, or two years even, would, would fit that.
They weren't, they weren't gonna survive. They might apply, though. But that's, that's okay, that's, they wanna put the energy into that. And of course, the diversity statement is law, we have to have that there. We would still, did everybody agree that we could go with preferred instead of desired for that column? Okay, then, and then we could keep the, the earned doctorate. Now, let's look at that second one, to your point. Preferred, five or more years, and except, that one actually comes as a little bit redundant, because we're gonna put something in the first column. So that one actually goes away, unless there's something there that we wanna capture. And we won't say a number.
Oh, the five or more.
We'll say significant. Okay, so that goes over there, we don't use a number. Again, that's a little wordy, but the concept is there. And then what about the third bullet? The senior, we already said that, that's, that's, that gets redundant too.
Yeah, that's where we, in this case, it eliminated people by having higher education.
Yeah, so you wanna hear, so we're saying we're not going to give preference to higher ed. We're gonna say senior, we could say, just like it is, minus higher ed, senior administrative experience in progressively responsible positions. So what we're saying is you've held more than one role. You started here, you went there, you went there. And, and, and the terminology has to purposely stay made, if you're doing the broad net, because those terms would be different depending on the organization. You come up through a nonprofit, for example. We have, when we do the broad net, when we do sometimes get people from the nonprofits, actually more, more than from corporate, we'll get nonprofit leaders stepping over, or attempting to. Does that, so, so, everybody agrees we take in higher ed out of there?
No. If we did that, would we then have a separate one that says familiar with higher ed issues? Because I, I don't want someone who's never stepped foot in a college campus. I'm not, you know, you know what I mean? They went to college.
Maybe that's the preferred one is where we have to say something about familiarity and commitment to the community college mission. I mean, I'm going back to the mission, do they understand why we exist and how we're different? And, and how did they get familiar? Were they a student? Well, that's actually a plus, I think, if they were a student. But what else have they done to stay in touch with what's going on? Or you could, as opposed to saying mission, you could go with a focus on familiar with higher ed issues. That would be, and that wouldn't rule out non-educators. And then, and again, it would be in the preferred, not in the required, if you will. How do you feel about that?
I, I like the mission, because I, as you pointed out earlier, we are a distinct component with our own mission. And potentially, there is that overlap with nonprofit and with corporate, because, you know, we're, we're looking at preparing people for jobs and, and their future.
I don't know. I, I think that's a stretch. I, I cannot, I'm trying to imagine myself helping to select somebody without experience in higher education. It's, it's just, I mean, I don't rule it out completely, but it's, it's really a difficult stretch for me.
It's a net, it's a net to start with, and then, you know.
I also wanna be fair to potential applicants.
But if you get a spectacular person, why rule them out before they even apply is kind of where I start.
No, I hear you.
I will tell you that the issue that you discussed earlier about how would faculty receive someone without a doctorate, pales in comparison to how they will react if you have someone from the corporate world. I mean, I just.
Yeah.
Can I also add a comment? It, it's, depending on the wide range of people who decide to participate in your process, it will be clear to the committee. It will be funneled down who has what appears to be the best potential to refer to the board members. And, and as the candidates come in, how they present their qualifications, how the interview process goes, once that comes down, it becomes pretty clear who will be the best candidates for consideration for the board.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking to reinforce, that our screening committee has a representative composition in order to make them feel like the people they are putting forward to the board are comfortable. You know, we could select any one of them, and they would, so, so there's a, you know, this gap between, you know, qualific, paper qualifications and the way the person interviews and actually comes across and expresses themselves, and all the things that make you decide this is a real potential candidate. Our screening committee helps us with that.
I, I think, I, I, I agree. I think that the committee will probably take care of it. And if they are thrilled with some very non-traditional candidate, another place it sometimes come from that is non-traditional is military. They have a hard time getting through committees too, but every now and then it happens. And if that's what happens, then it'll be in your laps. You, you'll be the ones to decide, is this a good fit? And do these other, do they, are they non-traditional, but they also break the stereotype that makes them be non-traditional in the first place? And now you, you'll certainly get to decide that, but most likely, the committee will be the ones struggling and making a call on it. If it gets all the way to you, but.
No, I, I accept the argument that it's, it's a net casting process, and, and I have, I've watched this committee now twice before, and I've always been impressed with their capacity to sort of figure it out and do, do exactly the right thing.
It's, it's, I, I don't wanna compare it to making sausage, because people always talk about that in a derogatory sense. But I have watched so many committees with such diverse points of view, and they're all what I call the Noah's Ark committees. And by the time we're done, not only are they on the same page, and I'm saying this with committee members in the room, you can't even tell who was the union president, who was a community member, who was whatever. And they just like, oh yeah, this is what we really need, this is what, you know. Now, as you go through the process, yes, those different perspectives get shared, and they temper one another. And part of what I said to the committee today, so you know the kinds of talk, I said, when you've reviewed all these paper applications, or not paper, that's a big issue. Have you reviewed all the applications online? And we come in to discuss them, you will have your paper notes, but nobody else but me will know how you felt about anybody. And nobody ever needs to know, because by the time we're done, you will have changed your mind. If you haven't changed your mind about some of them, I haven't done my job. Because you need to hear from the other perspectives, and then mix the batter, if you will, in a positive way. So we come out at the same place, and you'll get community members saying, oh, I never thought about that. Committee members are a little bit, community members are a little bit shocked to learn how our shared governance process works. So that's, especially if they come from the corporate sector. But that's okay, they learned about us in the process. And on the other hand, sometimes campus people are surprised to hear what community folks are looking for, which is why you have a blend. But when you get done, it works. So here's what I have, as of right now, and I'll do some wordsmithing. But there would be three minimum qualifications. One, the earned master's degree, two, the required statement on diversity, and the third one would be the significant executive level experience. Then we would go to the preferred column, and we'd say an earned doctorate is preferred. And we would say a senior administrative experience in progressively responsible positions. Again, we're looking for how they do. And then the third part would be, probably do it in the other order, but something about the familiarity and commitment to the community college mission. And then we stop. And then all our other things we want, we go into our ideal characteristics where there's a lot, a lot more to say. Is everybody okay with that?
In that last bullet that you, the last statement that you said, with that, so the California Community College mission, it works in, it's twofold. It works in tandem, it's the internal and the external context. And I think it's really, I feel that it's, our preferred candidate is going to understand that community college mission within the context of the internal and external context that the community college operate within.
Well, would it not be the mission that you have stated on your accreditation documentation about what your mission is? I, I'm not sure how internal, external mission is different.
So, so the California Community College serves a purpose for so many different things, as we know, whether we're a pipeline for a four-year transfer to specific groups, the CTE. But the interplay between the external context of carrying out that mission in tandem with the internal context of the actual folks that are doing the work, that is so intricately related, that I feel that that has been, in my opinion, one of the reasons why we have seen three presidents in the last seven years.
Is that, I, I need clarification on that. So are you referring to how the external community perceives the mission? Is that, is that what we say?
Yeah, so the California Community College, Santa Barbara City College, we can't execute our mission without the work of the community.
Right.
The community can't take advantage and participate in the mission without the house here. So SBCC is, you know, we're, we're doing the work, and the community then benefits from that work. But the college can't just do the work in isolation. The college responds to the community. And so I feel like that is a very, that has to be a must in, in this climate of education.
So understanding the external community, connecting with the community, meeting the needs of the community. You've just outlined a wonderful component of that opportunities and challenges section. That's where you spell it out. This new president must be able to do all the above of what you just were describing. So I don't know how you could.
Community engagement?
Community engagement is another good word, but I really, I can tell you're down to the nuts and bolts of, are you out there listening to, connecting with? But yes, that would be one of your, I think that could easily be one of your opportunities and challenges. Remember, those are the ones are gonna pay a lot of attention to. So if that's, and there might even be the political aspects of interacting with the community, I don't know, but in a lot of communities, that's the case. I don't know how much external pressure you receive here in the community, I'm looking around, I'm not sure. I don't know, your business and industry community per se is a little different than other places. So I don't know how much pressure you get from local businesses and industry about, you're not preparing the people that we need, we can't find people, we can't find a workforce. All of those are examples of that engagement. It's way beyond being visible in the community, it's getting the whole campus to, what I think I hear you saying, Trustee Giado, is to think that way. To think about how to, am I getting close? Because I, I'm, I can tell there's a, there's a, there's a concern there, and I'm not quite sure if I'm catching it or not.
Yeah, no, and it could live there, but it, I think that's some, and goodness sakes, these people, wonderful candidates that would want to come and apply with the modalities of communication that are readily available to us at the fingertips, they're gonna Google, so they're gonna, they're gonna know what the challenges and opportunities are. I mean, if I Google SBCC right now, I'm gonna not only know what my challenges are with my K-12 partners, I'm gonna know what my challenges are regionally, and economics, all of that stuff.
Okay.
It, I, I do want it to, that the preferred qualification, it's, are the folks that are running our institutions right now, with the myriad of degrees and dots that they have and the accolades, it is such a complex role and such a lonely role that these men and women are stepping into, that for Santa Barbara City College, knowing the reality of what we have been facing in our community, both from our pre-K, higher ed, you know, sectors, that we prefer someone that knows that they're gonna come in, understanding and knowing that.
To be able to work with that.
And so if, if they, if you feel and you recommend that that's gonna live well, and the opportunities and the challenges, so be it. But we prefer someone that is going to need to understand that having increased responsibility in these progressively higher positions of whatever sector it may be, but that it is, that context of experience is really going to be applied here, because we prefer that someone would be able to execute that in their ability to.
Sure. I, I think it, I think respectfully, I think it belongs more to the opportunities and challenges. And one of the, I, I almost hesitate, I'm writing things about opportunities as, as we do sidebars and it works, but I almost hesitate to say this, but I, I would not like to see you, I would not recommend you get too much more into these two columns, because once you have a lot, then people notice what you didn't say, and what you haven't said is anything about teaching and learning, or student success. Now, that's fine, as long as we put it over here in the opportunities and challenges. But I would say, keep these as simple as we have, and then let's come over here, and then we can go as deep as you want with the community engagement, with understanding the community, with being an advocate, an advocate in the community, a, certainly that, an advocate not just in the community, but you know, local, state, national advocacy is something most boards definitely wanna see their, their president doing. Without taking too much more of your time on this same point, tell, I'm interested in, from all of you, what, what is the kernel of the issue with the external community? What is it, the people who are not happy with you, which is what I'm, what, what is it? What is it they want that you're not doing? Is it that we're up, are we up in the ivory tower in the hill and we don't go out? Is it that we don't do work for us? Is it that we aren't in touch with the underrepresented? What, what is it that the disengagement that you perceive has caused? And I, I probably opened a big can of worms here, but, but I need a sense of that myself, so. What does the community think? Could you go out and pass a bond right now?
No.
No, not even close?
Well, we might have a difference of opinion on that, but I think it'd be difficult.
Okay, so what do they think of you?
Um, if I may, I mean, I, I would say that the reason, I think board members would agree with me, that the, the, a bond might not pass right now, for example, is because there's a perception in the community that we have a number of students here that are not local. There's the conflict between passing a local bond versus the size and impact of this community college.
Are you a feeder school for the university? Is that why you have a lot?
We are.
Yeah, I assumed, yeah.
Yeah. And so there are a lot of different reasons why people feel that impact, but, you know, the reality is, in Santa Barbara, we have a huge housing issue.
A warrant?
Housing.
Oh, yes.
And I think that there are a lot of community members. And, um, I think that, uh, there are a lot of community members who have a lot of different issues, um, with the college. But in terms of a bond, that, that, um, the way people feel about whether City College is being proactive about the impact of their students on the community or not being proactive.
Do they see your students as a negative impact?
Some do and some don't, but everybody, when you're feeling like you're gonna pass a local bond, is considering, yeah.
So I'll take back the bond part, although they're increasingly successful across California and other places now. Okay, so, so that, I, I, maybe I'll just suffice, but this person needs to be able to not only be engaged in the community, but to build bridges with the community, build better relations with the community, all the above.
I, I would add to that, that in the last year, we've had some significant issues that have come before the board relating to gender equity and, and diversity and racial equity. And it, so that's kind of twofold. One is just grappling with those issues. But then secondly, there, there has been a perception in the community because of the kinds of press we've had that, that we're not handling it correctly. Either from both sides, either we're going too far this way or not going enough that way. So, but I think there has, again, all this stuff, I, I, I always get concerned about, you know, basing all this on kind of anecdotal, you know, who we talked to last, but I think if we took a survey of some sort, you would find that people are aware there's been issues at the campus. And we've had some press that, that kind of feeds, feeds that.
So there's probably two or three, uh, things that I would propose be in your opportunities and challenges that come out of your initial comments. One about the engagement and the partnerships, and others about the relationships and the perception, the public relationship, if you will. But there's also the concrete engagement. Are we out there? Are we serving their needs? Do we even know what their needs are? All, all those kinds of things. And then, of course, then the public relations comes into. It's, you're, you're gonna want some kind of statement about what you're, and you have it in that one document that you passed, but some kind of statement about where you are with respect to, uh, valuing diversity and equity and your commitment to closing the achievement gap and, uh, your commitment to, I got several things. I got a lot of comments from the, the staff and faculty that already wrote to me around the topic of inclusion and diversity and things related to that, that these are challenges we're facing and we need to deal with it. And, um, I told you, I wasn't gonna say this, but I'm going to say it. Yeah, and that is that I had, I had several people brought up issues that I don't think belongs in your profile, but I was just surprised to see it pop up that often. And that was things related to sexual harassment. And then when you mentioned gender stuff too, then I thought, okay, well, maybe that was part of a recent issue that is on people's minds, but still, I'm not, and as you direct me, I am not putting that in your profile, cause that would send the wrong message. But the issues of inclusion and equity, definitely you wanna make some strong statements. Your, your staff colleagues up to this point so far, most of their comments, when I asked about challenges and opportunities, focused around enrollment and being creative about dealing with enrollment. That was probably the single most often quoted issue. And next to that was fiscal stability and the funding formula, the lack of resources for certain programs, and sometimes they would mention them by, by name. Those were by far the two most frequently mentioned ones. Um, and then the, the campus climate and the diversity. Campus climate was another one that was used. And on the diversity, besides sexual harassment, there were, there were several people, not a huge a number, but several out of forty that mentioned there is, um, they felt still issues with respect to discrimination and favoritism and, and then inequity, which is the same thing. But again, you know, if, if I don't hear it from a whole bunch of people, I don't get too concerned. If I hear it from a lot of people, then I think it's something. And, and there were several references to human resources in general. And when you think about a human resources is all the above too, you could say that that's part of that issue. So whether or not that's something that you wanna include as one of our challenges, that, you know, we are working toward creating a climate that is totally inclusive, whatever. I just wanna be careful. I don't wanna send the message that you've got a problem you don't have.
Right.
But at the same time, we wanna send the message that you are committed to this philosophy. So it's your wording that becomes really important there. Uh, oh, well, this is one that came up a lot. This is more on ideal characteristics, but after listening to you, maybe not, maybe this is in the opportunity challenge column. Several people said they gotta understand the Santa Barbara culture. And sometimes they meant the campus and sometimes they meant the community. So that did come frequently from your own people. Your candidates, unless they're internal, are not going to understand it already. And even when they do their homework, they're not really gonna understand it till they talk with you, till they're here. But what they can do in a good application or a good interview is say, here's how I would approach coming to a new community. This is, in my opinion, that's a good answer. And then tell you how you'd approach it. You know, I'm gonna read this, I'm gonna meet with this group, I'm gonna ask every one of you, who are the people in the community I should go visit right away? And who, who's, where's the leadership on campus? Well, that I can figure out for myself, I don't have to ask you that. But I'm gonna ask you about the external community and I'm gonna learn what is that? And I'm gonna take two or three people under my wing or ask them to take me under their wing and say, don't let me, you know, inadvertently stick my foot in my mouth. Tell me, what do I need to know about this particular community member? What do I need to know here? And so you know that they know how to learn the new community. They might also, in a good letter or interview, tell you how they went into a community that was very different than what they had previously experienced or that was new to them and how they did it, what they did to, to learn the community. Yes. But that's, I just want you to know how I feel for some of the things they said.
That's, that's very helpful. Um, in talking about opportunities, one of the things you just said, um, came to mind, which I think is perhaps unique for us, which is our foundation. Um, and our Santa foundation is exceptionally
Really good, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
And a place where a new person to the community and to the college can look for resources to become integrated with the community. So that's an opportunity that I think is pretty unique to us and we should highlight.
That is a really good point because not only, it's not just the revenue they bring in, and Jeff was sharing some of that with me today, but the fact that there's all those leaders that they can meet immediately.
Right, and our leadership in the Promise program.
Yes.
And that relationship with the community. I think those are things we can talk about as opportunities.
Absolutely, that's very good.
On, on the flip side, I was gonna say, there's a broader element as well to the community and college commentary, which to me is, is the, um, challenge of having respectful conversations among folks that have differing viewpoints.
Internally?
Internally and externally. We have really had a lot of, um, conversations that are more heated than, um, we would hope they are in the future. And struggling on that issue is, I think, a challenge for all of us.
So respectful conversations.
And it reflects the national environment, really. I mean, we are not unique here. This isn't something we thought of.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a good point. But the respectful conversations around divergent points of view and, and of course, starts with the president and the board, you know, that's, that's all part of that.
Cause it's diversity of thought.
Thought, yeah, that's what I see, not, not just.
Um, I just wanted to go, I, you know, back to your point of what you feel, I, my sense of the community, it, we're still, even with the issues of the last year and the things that the college has been through, the community still holds this to very high regard. And, um, and although all these things have gone on, what I hear the community is concerned about, even, it's not even the housing, the housing is more of a perception. We, our international student is capped at fifteen hundred, it's in our policy, they can look it up. We allow priority enrollment to our dual, uh, to our Promise students, uh, great partnerships with dual enrollment. The perception is the desire that they, we want to continue to elevate teaching and learning at this institution. This has been the gift to the community for everyone and anyone, especially our local community. And the community would love to see us getting back to what we do best, and that is teaching and learning. And, and I think that this, this is with the right person, this is gonna be a season where they can go out and say, oh, actually, you know what? Did you know how many language schools are in town? We actually are not the only ones that attract people, cause we're on the hill and can have a press box overlooking one eighty of the ocean. Folks want teaching and learning to be a priority on this campus because teaching and learning is the comprehensive community mission that's gonna help folks get to what they need to.
And I, I really glad you said that because not only what the community wants, a good candidate is gonna be looking for that. And so far, we haven't said too much about that tonight. You know, that you're looking for a leader. You're not looking for a vice president of academic affairs, but you want someone who's passionate about teaching and learning and knows how to support faculty's pursuit of excellence. You know, it sounds almost like a cliche, but that's really what we want. And if we're saying we really believe in student success and closing the achievement gap, that all happens through the pursuit of excellent teaching and learning, which might mean doing things differently than the way it's always been done, so that your leader can help faculty adjust their pedagogy, for example, and that there's a good reason for that. But again, it's still in a participative inspirational way as opposed to a hammer, if you will, which I think some people are kind of feeling that way right now about the, sorry, I have to be careful. But there's some things coming down from the state level that some people are wondering how much, how much flexibility do I have in my classroom at this point? I'm not gonna go there, but your leader certainly needs to be somebody who can talk their language and, and inspire them, or if nothing else, provide the resources so they can go and get even better at what they already do. But it's back to teaching and learning. So I really encourage you that we have something in there about that. So people don't read this and forget that it's a, it is an institution of higher ed. And, okay, anyway, enough said, my own, my own soapbox. It's the reason I do this job, for goodness sakes. So I don't want you to lose track. Yes.
So I, I agree with, we do need to get the teaching and learning strongly in there. And, but I do think like what Robert mentioned earlier about our struggles with campus climate and racial equity and gender equity, those affect teaching and learning.
They do, that's true.
The students have come to us so much, saying that their learning is impaired because of them. And I think I'd want a superintendent who's also focused on solving the big issues like housing and food insecurity that are stopping our students from being able to succeed and making, you know, knowing that those are issues here, just like they are everywhere else. Maybe it's a little bigger here because of the high cost of living that we have and that those should be priorities to, for the college and for the superintendent to keep in mind.
Is that a priority of this board?
I would like to think so.
That you expect, that you expect your leader to help address, we call them barriers to student success?
Yeah.
It's housing, it's transportation, it's food, it's clothing, but not all boards feel that that's part of their role. So I, I would need direction from you.
I mean, I agree a hundred and fifty percent with Trastiki, that that is such a huge issue in our community for students and such a huge barrier. But I don't think that it's the priority, that that's not the role of the board. And I come from K-12. And so when I look at what teach, what I as a teacher am being asked to do, um, in addition to teach reading and to get the backpack and the clothes and the counseling and the food and the dinner, and I'll, so it, there is, and that's where I think that that, working with the community where we have, goodness, in Santa Barbara, we've got more nonprofits, right, Jeff? Per square feet than in any in the country. So I think that that's where we can leverage, um, the work of our partners that can help support us in that capacity. Because when you add more to the perimeter, teaching and learning cannot get watered down. And that is what we do here. We are a teaching and learning institution and elevating the capacity of, you know, the PhD people that know what they're doing. If the PhD president comes along, that's great, but I, the PhD people are in the classroom being phenomenal and that's what we wanna elevate. That's what the community college system to me does, that's what transforms lives, is the excellence in teaching and learning from a local high school student that was at risk and now transferring to the Haas School of Business to Annenberg. We have these amazing stories of what has happened here, that that is what our community wants to continue to happen. Um, we are the pipeline for underrepresented students to prior ed. And Santa Barbara is no different than any other community. Um, and we've been able to accomplish the successes we've had, not perfect, but we do a lot of really good things here. And so bringing someone in that can continue to sustain that. So not disagreeing that that's not a priority for students, but that, that's not what I would charge a president to go and try to solve.
Well, there's, there might be a compromised position here, which is, in, in the choice of language, which is, you are committed to student success.
Yes.
That's, that we know. So you, it would not be too much of a stretch perhaps to say that your president, working with his, his or her colleagues at the institution and in the community, will address the barriers to student success without start spelling out
How, what?
Clothing closet, food pantry, without saying that, but he is overcoming the barriers because the literature is coming out just almost weekly now on what colleges are trying to do, without taking away from teaching and learning. I started my career as a fourth grade teacher and it was many decades ago. And it was just at the beginning of the free breakfast and lunch programs. And I had kids in my class who were starving when they got to school that morning. So it, we welcomed the free breakfast program because, and it used to be cold, so I went to school an hour early and opened the door so they could come in. So there's some things we can do without it taking away from teaching and learning. In that particular case, they weren't gonna learn anything till we got something in their stomachs. So, and I'm not saying it's the same with adults, but there's a lot going on, but we, we don't have to get that specific in this document. But we can talk the barriers, overcoming the barriers to student success. And, and then you all can, at a later time, decide how and when, or which partners can eat, referral services, childcare is another one. I didn't even know where you, where they even offered childcare. But that's another one that shows up on that same list a lot.
I, yes, I, I, you know, I think it probably comes under the category of student success because that's, that's our primary focus.
Yes.
And, and the, the new student funding formula, uh, really emphasizes that. I mean, I think we were, that was already our, our, our goal before the student funding formula, but that really gets us to, uh, focus even more in, in that area. But I think that any, any, anybody we hire would have to recognize the things that Jonathan mentioned, the barriers. So, um.
Yeah, I don't think you have to parcel them out. I don't even think you have to prioritize. The only time you end up totally having to prioritize is when you start talking about your budget. And, and that's, of course, where partnerships come in, where foundations come in big time in terms of helping students meet those other needs. And the college president and/or her or his designee may be the person that is helping find those partners that can provide that service or can be on campus once a week to make sure people know that that service is available. There's lots of ways of doing it without it being, you're a direct service provider at this point. I, I wrote down fiscal because I figured we, that's, that's a no-brainer in terms of, and not only managing your resources creatively, legally, I always talk about creative finance and then I realize people think I mean something that I don't mean, but managing, administering, um, equitably, appropriately, et cetera, and of course, generating new revenues. And that's, that's a part of every president's role now. There were, a few presidents did that ten years ago, almost nobody did twenty years ago. Dr. McDougal might be one of the exceptions that was doing it a long time ago, but not many were.
He's still doing it.
And he's still doing it for you all the time.
For the community.
Oh, that's wonderful, that's wonderful. Tell him hello for him. But the, but.
One question that I have to make, um, when you're talking about the, um, uh, what's going into this?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if the elements that we've talked about here, if it might make sense for you to take a look at our annual goals?
I have.
Yeah, if you have the annual goals, I'm just wondering if there are just pieces of language from there that makes sense to align.
They were really well-written, so I remember that. And I will look at that again.
I don't think you need to look at it.
Okay.
But just for some of the people.
Actually have it, but.
At least we know that those evolved in the past.
But we're gonna get new ones.
Very good point.
Yeah.
You know what I'll do too? Let me, if I, I'll take a little flexibility here. When we, when we have this set out here, you're right, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So we have that and we have the ideal characteristics. And really, the ideal characteristics, I wanna spend a few minutes with you on it, but I've got a list this long that you and others are giving me already, so I'm not too worried about that. But on the webpage, there will be some links on the other side that like to your strategic plan or to your budget or to your accreditation status. I didn't even know, when are you, where are you with accreditation?
In the process of being, of submitting, in the process of getting prepared.
Are you, so you're submitting the report soon?
We had, we had a mid-year and then we're in the process of, no, we did already. And now we're in the process of doing the main, I should say, we, wonderful people here in the college, Dr. Ralston.
So you're like two or three years away, does anybody know? Two? Okay, that's coming up close.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to mention the accreditation. So we need to mention the accreditation if it's that close. But where I was going with this links on the side, we'll put a link directly to the board's goals, so that no matter what ends up in the profile, they can also click on that and see your goals. I would not suggesting for a minute that you put anything in your goals that you don't fully support. Judging by the few meetings I've watched, I don't think it would have survived if that wasn't the case. So I'm gonna tell you that is a wonderful set of goals. I think I mentioned that to you last week when I was on camera. It's very thorough, it's very comprehensive, it's all like, okay, I hope you do an annual board self-assessment, which is what good boards do, I hope.
We just got the email for it.
Next week.
And I hope your goals are a part of that, not just your behavior, but your goals. Because if you are accomplishing those things, that is, it's really literally awesome. I mean, that is a really good set of goals. And so if we have that as part of our profile, even if it's a link, that's gonna tell candidates a lot about you. They're gonna, whoa, look at this, they're doing this, they're talking about that, they're committed to that. That will tell a huge message. Thank you for reminding me of that, because I was impressed. So we will definitely put it as a link, and then I will also look at it and steal some language. Especially if it's around an idea you've already brought up today. Are there other kind of big issues that are out there?
I mean, just going back to the bond issue, I mean, we are experiencing a facilities problem.
Oh, yes.
We're struggling to figure out the financing for our facilities. There's a need, we failed a bond five years ago. Whoever comes in is gonna have to figure that out. I'm not, I don't wanna say like pass a bond, is there a challenge?
But you want them to explore, it's important to you that they come in and explore and build support for an eventual bond? Are you prepared for language, is that strong? No.
No, I mean, well, the problem, so facilities are directly tied to accreditation. I mean, it's an issue we have to face, we have aging facilities, that's just the nature of our 100-year-old campus.
I noticed some of that today.
So it would really be someone that has that lens of looking that enrollment is the number-one revenue generator for the college, knowing that the college has this unique wonderful funding formula that nobody really knows what it is yet. And then knowing that facilities are a big source of depleting our revenue. So you have these three moving pieces that someone's gonna have to understand how those three play together. And someone, I'm sure, is gonna understand how the educational master plan overlays with the facilities and equity. So all of that, so that's, I'm assuming, I'm speaking this with the assumption that they're gonna know that these different things work together.
But you're not prepared to say yet that you are, would like, at some point in the foreseeable future, go out for a bond to renovate facilities?
I don't think there's unanimity on the board to say that. I mean, I think there, I think we all, I think we, some of us feel that we could do a bond sooner than later. Others don't agree with that, but I think we all agree, at some point, we're going to need a bond. But just, when that is, is the debate and the discussion.
But I don't think, I think it's just more, because we haven't, it's more of a process and timeline, where we haven't gotten the educational master plan, we haven't got the facilities master. So I think once all those plans are in place, then we'll say, okay, can we make an informed decision? So I don't think that it's that we're debating to or not to have one, it's.
Too early.
The college is still gathering all of the information for us, yeah, to make sure that we are successful if and when should we, that we have, what's in front of us, and we just don't have it.
So just for my edification, I made the comment, and I hope it won't hurt anybody's feelings, but in the few buildings that I've been in today, I just, they, it wasn't, I don't know how you are on space utilization. Maybe enrollment is low enough, space is not the issue, renovation is the issue. I can assure you, renovation was the issue in several of the women's restrooms I was in. And I use that as an example, I go on a lot of campuses, and it's one of my benchmarks. That and signage, can I find the buildings I need? And I didn't have any trouble there, a little bit, but not too much. Yeah, actually, a little bit, come to think of it. But the other struck me, one of the things I did not tell you, when I, I don't think I mentioned this to you when I was interviewing with you, was that I served as interim chancellor myself a few years ago, in a very weak moment, said yes to the City College of San Francisco.
Bless your heart for helping out the sister college.
Thank you, I feel like I earned my whatever for life. It was just as they were crashing, bankrupt and show cause. And when I interviewed with the board, the board knew they had fiscal problems, they didn't know they had accreditation problems. But anyway, they had, and they had built a $40 million beautiful center in Chinatown that was paid with bonds, because that community will pass anything they put in front of them. So they were lucky. But I went into the administration building, and went into the restroom, that's another restroom story, sorry. And I came back out and I said, either fix it or close it. That is unacceptable, it was just, it wasn't really administration, we were on one floor. It was Student Service Building, so all the students were coming in to register at the main campus. I said, that's absurd. And I said to the gentleman I was talking to, come with me, I'll make sure it's clear, I wanna show you what I saw. Anyway, I was reminded about today. It wasn't quite that bad, but I had this deja vu, and I went, oh yeah, City College, oh yeah, old building. But your buildings are beautiful. I mean, the campus is gorgeous and the buildings are pretty, but it needs help. And I didn't mention it earlier, but I heard that a lot from your staff. And I couldn't tell, it didn't sound like it was space utilization, it sounded like it was maintenance and repair and, you know, things of that nature. So we won't talk about a bond, but we can say that they need to address the issue of facilities. And whatever those issues they may be aware of. You already answered one question I was gonna ask you, and that was, do you have any bond money? Do you have any construction in progress? I don't think, to honest, I haven't been on a campus where there wasn't some construction happening in a very, very, very long time. So you were due.
We made, we tried to have a bond in 2014, and we did not pass it. So we have used up all of our bond money at this point. So it's tight, and so saying we need to address facilities. And at the same time, and this is, you know, the state funding formula has changed, that's a challenge.
Did it help you or hurt you?
It helped us, we think, but now they're backtracking on how they are doing it, so we may have been overly optimistic. And we have what appears to be a very substantial operating deficit. And so that is a challenge, that balancing the operating budget is a challenge.
That definitely has to be on the list, we aren't surprising people. And when you're looking at your candidates, both the committee, and I'll relay that, of course, and then when you're looking, they need to have some skills in that area. They don't have to be a chief financial officer, but they need to have some skills, particularly in generating new revenue and being creative, and so.
Well, not just that, but financial stewardship and conservative. Like, so it's not just generating revenue, it's just really having the lens of.
Yeah, we have declining enrollment, so it's not so much that you're looking for generating revenue as being budget disciplined.
Well, when I say generating revenue, I mean from alternative sources. Someone who would love to have the library named after them, if you would do so after it had been renovated the way it needs to be, I'm just picking that out of the hat.
We have a library named after a very generous donor.
You already used that one, then go to something else. Okay, so the time is getting late, and I don't wanna keep you too long, but I have gone through the other profile from last time and picked out some of the ideal characteristics. They're not really that unusual. I'm hearing from staff what they're looking for. Obviously, a good communicator, good interpersonal skills, honesty, the integrity. I think, so everything around communication. There's also this issue about the community and the outreach and the engagement. There's the whole issue about how they work with staff, and namely, commitment to shared governance and collegiality and openness, trustworthiness, participatory governance, all the above. And then several did mention being able, having skills to be able to work with the board, so they did bring that up as well. And then there's all the kinds of, some of the things that you've talked about as possible opportunities and challenges will still show up in the ideal characteristics, maybe as a bullet point, like fiscally savvy or politically savvy. But they'll get fleshed out in the opportunities and challenges, because it rose to the top. That's what I'm trying to say, that by the top, I mean, if we have 15 or 20 ideal characteristics, we'll try to have the eight or 10 of the opportunities and challenges. But I would like to hear if there is some particular characteristics that come to your mind right now that are really high on your priorities. I know you could have the list this long, but try to think, what's the top two or three you wanna be sure your president possesses? See where you are.
Last time, we are top two, and really, there were sort of top three, and I'm not sure they've changed much. College leader and community leader, and those were very shorthand summaries. But I think one of the things that, at least to me, and I think others here feel, makes a successful college president is the ability to do both of those things.
And balance it.
And balance it. And as well, there is working with the foundation. We have traditionally, in the past, described the job as having three components. You know, you're in charge of the college, you have your relationship with the community, and you work with the foundation, and those are three almost equal commitments.
So you see your president that involved with your foundation, even though you have a foundation director? That in your colleges, your foundation is not an auxiliary, right? It's totally independent. So what is the president's role with a totally independent entity out there?
The face of the college, the face of the college.
Face of the college, okay, but he's not running, or she is not running the foundation, obviously.
Not running the foundation, but it's sufficiently integrated with the foundation's goals and efforts that it takes considerable time. I mean, and that historically has been a component of the foundation's success.
Good.
I mean, as we talk about Peter McDougal and John Romo and all of that.
And the foundation clearly knows what the college's priorities are, those kind of things. Okay, other high priority personal characteristics?
An ability to generate a sense of trust.
Trust, uh-huh, okay. That came up from staff, too. Okay?
I'd say, if I had to pick two, I'd put, oh, I just lost my train of thought. One is to know how to get good advice from others and surround themselves by people smarter or more skilled than them in certain areas. And then also being able to know when they're wrong and when they need to do something different.
So a little humility.
Humility.
Both of them, those are humility, yeah. Okay, that's good, because a key part of that president's role is that senior team that reports to her, him, in terms of selecting them and supporting them and then listening to them. And then, of course, with you as well. Others?
I think diplomatic. And we have an amazing vision, mission, and core principles. And when I think of a diplomat, you are taking that to everywhere you go, and you're not gonna compromise. I am a diplomat for this is my, yeah, and we have a very clear charter for Santa Barbara. And that, I'm sure you include that link, but we have, our core principles are a free exchange of ideas, diversity of thinking. That is already in what we say we are, and so.
That's another link that we'll put on there, too. You were talking about diplomat, it almost sounds like advocate as well.
That reminded me, though, I agree with Veronica. I think it's, no, I've lost my train of thought, too, but I.
It's getting late.
It's getting late, but I, what I was, what I was struck by when I became a trustee a year and a half ago was how complex this place is, extraordinarily complex. And I came from the, I came from the legal world, and I saw a lot of primarily represented corporations, and I saw a lot of strong people, a lot of strong leaders, but I never, and I had strong leaders in my law firm, which was a national law firm of, you know, we had 500 employees and 200 lawyers. So we, you know, I saw up close what good administrators were, but I have never seen anything that was as complex as being president of a community college. And so it takes an extraordinary skill to be able to work with all the variety of people that they're required, that he or she is required to work with, and at the same time, be a decisive leader. I think it, it's a matter of collecting, collecting the opinions, touching base with all the right people, and then acting.
Sure, collaborate, but then move.
Collaborate and move, that's a good way to say it.
I could translate that to being able to leap over tall buildings in a single bound.
So we're back to the walk on water and leap over hall buildings, okay.
But I think.
But it's true, it's so complex.
But I think there's a lot of strong leaders in this world who would come into this position, knowing they've been successful in other arenas, being strong leaders, and discover that their techniques don't work the same way here.
Because a lot of things are out of your control, even when you're the president, they're out of your control. And the list of constituencies is long. Everybody expects something, and what they all expect is somewhat different. And I'm a firm believer in participatory governance, but participatory governance also tends to slow down the process. It does usually lead to better decisions, so that's why we do it. But that drives people from the outside crazy, because it takes longer to make decisions. And yes, what does the state say? What does Title V say? What does the ed code say? What does the current Board of Governors say? What does the current chancellor say? Oh, and by the way, what does our local board say? And then you get to the other constituent. So, yeah, it is really complex. I do, a lot of my work is with leadership development for aspiring administrators and aspiring presidents. And like I told the committee earlier today, a lot of people don't want these jobs, they simply don't want them. They are too complex, they are too demanding, you will never make everybody happy. And I say, above all, if you need to be loved, do not go into this role, because that's not gonna happen. You might have a few that love you, and hopefully, a good size that respects you. Even those doesn't mean they like you, but they'll respect you, so it is complex.
But it's rewarding.
It is rewarding, but the reward is.
Go to one commencement.
Commencement, commencement is one of the nicest times of the year. Somebody who came from the classroom, I'll tell you, you don't get the kind of rewards you get in the classroom, where you hear from people and you hear from students and you hear from them 10 or 20 years later. It's a different kind of rewarding. So I tell those prospective folks, you have to, it almost has to be a calling, that's my belief. You don't do it for the money, you don't do it for the prestige, you have to really, really believe in it. Which remind, did everybody get to give me characteristics? Did you, Kate? Do we cover them?
I'm hearing all good.
Okay. Just some more?
I would like to throw out the idea that I think is very helpful to the college, which is a person who is willing to make a long-term commitment to the college and community. Stability is good for us, and it would be something that I would certainly look for in a candidate.
It would be really great, I can, I don't know how, we can't require it, we can't guarantee it. We can, in the interview process, we can talk about their, the committee asked that today earlier. Can we tell, can we ask them how long they promised to stay? I said, no, because if, and if you ask them, would they plan on staying a long time, of course, they're gonna say yes. I mean, so that's not gonna be the key. You can ask them things like, what are your long-term goals? What are your long-term career goals? They'll know what you're asking, but even then, they're probably gonna tell you what you wanna hear. So that's gonna be more of an intuitively thing that you folks can pursue with them, more so than the committee will. But we can talk about making a, and I've had, I've had to do this several times, I'm willing to make a commitment to this community. Translated, it's not just longevity, it means they're gonna live here. Because some boards are quite adamant, you can't commute from somewhere else. Or, and that gets a little tricky, because it can be a little sexist if you're not careful, in either direction, that you don't really wanna commute or marriage, because, I'm not saying you don't, but if the board says they don't, usually if they say that, it's because they've had one that didn't work, and the person left their community every weekend to go join their partner somewhere else. And so they were pretty, we still couldn't put that in the document, but they could talk to the candidate about that. Do you intend to move here? And, you know, we're careful about what you can ask or not. I tell candidates, when you're interviewing with the board, there are certain things they can't ask you, and we will keep you honest on that. But I tell the candidates, if you're comfortable, you tell the board that my partner and I have already visited, we're really exciting, he's looking for employment possibilities, we're trying to, because that's another issue you have, if it's a two-person issue, a single person, you don't have to worry about it. If it's two people, there is that issue about, is there employment available for them? And that brings me to the other part. And that brings me to the other part that I don't want to deal with tonight, but I'd like you to be thinking about. And that is on the compensation package. The housing is going to scare people away. There's just no way around that. And it's, depends on where they live now, and what they're used to, and what their home's worth where they are, and things like that. But if they're like the average part of the world, instead of Santa Barbara County, then they're going to have sticker shock. Now, if they're coming from San Francisco, or San Mateo, or a few other places, I'll be the same or better. But, but everywhere else, it's, so you'll need to have some conversations with yourselves about whether or not there will be, and I don't know, I haven't seen the current past president's contract. I'm going to get that. It's a public document, obviously, and people will get it for themselves, but I need to be as informed as they are. And I don't think there's a housing in there now, right?
The quality of life here is so much better.
I know. I used to try to tell that to my faculty.
They will be home in 10 minutes if they wanted to after an eight o'clock board meeting. Just saying.
And a home they can afford?
Well, it's a calling. They'll be here, they'll come, so let's just see what they got. You're talking to a teacher that lives in Santa Barbara, and I will not take a higher salary in the Bay Area.
Have you lived here a long time?
I have lived here for over 20 years.
But that helps.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that as a teacher's salary, it's enticing to go work in the Bay Area where I was born and raised. But I'm home, in two miles, and so.
I'm always smiling, because one of my colleges in my district was at Columbia College, which is up in the foothills of the Sierra. I mean, just gorgeous environment in the woods, literally, it should be a park. Well, it is a park. It's not a state forest park that they gave to us to build the campus, and everybody loves it. But I won't even tell you what they said to me when I said, but you have the quality of life. That's why I smiled when I said that. But I actually wanted to move the district office to Columbia, because I would have loved to have lived there. So, anyway, that's something to be thinking about. Here's what I propose as the next step. So I'm going to take everything you've said to me. The people in the campus have a few more days, almost a week, to respond additionally. And I will work with Louise on the surround material, but if you can trust us with the surround material, that's not going to, I think, be your issue about, because she's the expert in that department. But I would like to prepare a draft for you that will have the minimum qualms, some proposed opportunities and challenges, and then a bullet list of ideal characteristics. I'm going to prepare that draft, I'm going to send it out to you individually, so you can't do any reply-alls, but you can send me your thoughts back to me, and I can continue to work on that document so that when you meet on the 13th of June, you will have a draft that will, should not surprise anybody. And I won't be here personally, but Louise will be, and we've already talked about that. She can take your feedback at that time. And if I need to be with a board, actually, in Southern California that day, but with a board retreat all day, and I'll get done about the time you start, so if I need to, I can be on the conference call. But I have every confidence that she can take your feedback at that point. Hopefully, we will have been through two or three versions that you can live with. And then I guess I would just, here's my thought. Give me your feedback, be sure you can live with it. I don't know you real well. I got the feeling the other day that maybe trustee Croninger, that you look at the details more than others. I thought I saw a few comments headed in your direction that way about that. And that's fine. Don't fret about the word smithing. Give me your thoughts, but don't fret about it. Because, I mean, don't send out something that's grammatically incorrect. I mean, Louise will catch that, I'll count on that. But in the long run, it's not going to matter, you know, if we said this phrase or we said that phrase. But if there's something in there that really sends the wrong message, well, then by all means, please speak up. No, we don't believe in that, Pam. Why'd you say that? That's not us. Good, please tell me, that goes. Or, we really care about why, and we forgot to bring it up the other night. But I would expect to hear that from you via email, so that by the time we got to June 13th, there shouldn't have to be those kinds of surprises. But we would want you to formally approve that.
So you have then a second draft? In other words, you'll send one draft to us individually, and then we'll give.
I'll work on it, send another one.
So you will do the work that we would ordinarily have to do among ourselves, and you will see what you think is going to be a consensus, and send us another draft.
That's what I'm going to try to do.
Okay.
I'm going to try to capture your ideas.
Sounds good.
And unless you totally diametrically oppose each other, in which case, I may have some language that says this or this. But otherwise, I will try to be the mediator and come together with something that I think there would be consensus about. And if you are 95% happy with it, I hope you will, can live with it. Because like I said, by the time you're interviewing people, it's not going to matter. It really isn't. So, yes, please.
Could you finish the schedule part?
Oh, sure.
Thinking about possible vacations, and it would be nice to know what's the plan.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Angie if you would email that to them tomorrow, so you'll have it, you'll get an electronic copy of it. But the most important things for you is that the public forum, this is the most important date, October 24th and 25th. Still working on the locations, we'll figure it out. October 24th, the finalists will be here, and they'll have public forums. You are more than welcome to come. I encourage you to come, but I encourage you not to say a word, okay? Come to the forums and just watch. Your turn's the next day. But you want, you may very well want to see, how do they interact with staff? How do they handle the questions? But if you can't, it won't be the end of the world, but it would be nice. And we're also going to livestream it, so you could be watching it from somewhere else, if you can't physically be on campus that day. That's the 24th. The 25th, we will spend all day together and well into the evening, depending on how many candidates. We will interview the candidates, we will have some formal interview time, we will have some socializing time over a meal. You will waddle out of the day by the time you go home, because we will have some breakfast with one candidate, and some light lunch with another one, and some snacks with the third.
So I didn't follow. On the 24th, it's the screening committee?
No.
No, us.
24th is the campus world. The candidates will come to campus, they'll get a tour. They will have a public forum that's open to everybody to come in here. It's an hour-long, usually 50-minute forum, where they do a brief intro, people from the audience ask questions.
The finalist.
The finalist, this is the finalist.
Okay.
You don't see the semifinalists. When the semifinalists have been interviewed, which is on October 11th, as soon as I call them and confirm that they're invited to come back as a finalist, then as soon as that happens, you will be sending announcement out to the world, saying, here are the finalists, here's the forums, here's their bio, et cetera. And we will send you folks the total application package, cover letter, the resume, everything about the finalist. So you will already have had that, when you come to watch the forum, if you choose to, on the 24th. But you will be working on the 25th in both interviews and then a social period with each one of them. And when we're done, I hope it'll be three. I think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, it'll be four, only if the committee can't narrow it, or on the day that they pick them, on October 11th. If I know, because I worked really hard on this, that one or two of them are a finalist somewhere else, and they just might be gone by the 24th, then I will encourage the committee to go with four. Because I really like you to see three, if at all possible.
We had a range of three to five from the committee last time.
Yeah. Well, I'm encouraging three to four. If we need five, I'll know that you're okay with it. I don't like to bring five to campus, a couple of reasons. It splinters the campus about what they think about the candidates. It's sometimes splinters a board, and usually, they're not five. To be real honest, they're usually not five that really rank above.
No, I think we actually got four, but I'm just, we had given a range.
So, so far, unless you tell me otherwise. And the other thing, here's the other problem. Just, I really stressed with the committee today, how if they don't abide by the confidentiality, we will lose good candidates. We will also lose, there's a good chance you will lose a candidate if they come and interview on the 11th. Still confidential, they'll take that chance, especially a sitting president. We get done, and we narrow it to five, and I call them, and they'll say, how many are there? And I say, five, they'll decline.
Wait a minute, interview who on the 11th?
On the 11th, the committee interviews the first level.
Okay.
The 11th is when the committee interviews their, we call them semifinalists. So that's first-level interview. When they interview those, they're supposed to narrow it down and recommend to you. If they recommend five, the odds are high that when I call those five, that one or more, and it might very well be your best one, will say, no, thank you. Because I can't take the chance, the odds of being one in five, for the flack I'm going to get in my own district. And sitting presidents will take a hit, they just will. But if they're one of three, they're much more apt to accept the invitation. So I can know in the back of my mind if we really needed to, if we could, hopefully. Hopefully, if we have three really strong ones, and the fourth one's here, then it's going to depend what I know about those three. I can guarantee you that one or more will be in another search, but what I talk to them about is the calendar. So if they're not going to get interviewed by a board till after we would have them back, I don't care, that's fine. I just want to make sure they're not, they don't have an interview next week with a board, and they might have a position in hand. If you saw what just happened at Monterey, here just like two weeks ago. They only forwarded two finalists, and then one withdrew last week. So I haven't, I haven't heard what they decided to do, but they're down to one. My guess is they'll reopen. So that's why I don't ever want to go with two, unless, if there's really, I don't say, I should say never say never, but you know what I mean. I don't like you to take that risk. But I work really closely with these folks. Once they become a semifinalist, and I, I know they're in the running, then I work with them almost on a, at least weekly basis, some of them daily basis. Because they'll say, I've got an interview here, I've got this, this is going to come, and I rely on their professionalism to tell me exactly where they stand, and to let me know when they need to step out. Don't surprise us. And we're a small world in the community college field, and when I, when somebody surprises us one, two, three times, they're not going to be in our searches anymore. And it's not that I have that type of power, but I'm going to tell committees about that, that this person has backed out on us three times already. And so they usually will not do that. But the point is, I will know that when we are deciding who to send forward to you. And if one or two of those, there's a danger, then I will encourage the committee to pick four today. I'll remind him it's confidential, because by the time President Miller puts a note out, it might not be four at all. It might be three by that day. And if I know, we'll know in a few days, we'll even postpone the announcement till we find out for sure. I can't postpone it forever, but we can postpone it a few days, so that it, so we don't have the same kind of problem that they had. Yes.
I'm just wondering about the landscape out there, because I consider this as a pretty off-cycle president search. But you're right in the thick of everything, so are we off-cycle, or are there a lot, besides Monterey, apparently, who?
Oh, yeah. Well, we, I, we've had three new ones start in the last two weeks.
Okay.
So there are more in the spring, and it used to be that I would have said probably 90% were in the spring, 90, 95% were in the spring, early spring, if you wanted to be smart. Now, I don't have any hard numbers, but I'm guessing it's probably at least 30%, maybe 40, or in the fall. So in a way, it's good, because we're less likely to have them picked off. I did two last fall, and they ended at about the same time, just a week or two apart, two different states. And I thought at the time, oh, this is, I don't have to worry about losing my candidates at the end, you know, yeah. No. Every one of them in both of those were finalists in other searches, one of them in three searches. So they are happening in the fall. And to the extent that it's off-cycle, it's to your benefit, no, it's not. So I think I have what I need. I know you need to take another action that I'm interested in, but, oh, yes.
Question. We had last time, after the forums, the opportunity for community members to give their feedback to the board members before the interviews. Is that in your planning?
It's not.
Faculty and community, I mean, not faculty, staff, everybody who went to the forum.
Here's what we do.
Did it by email.
Yeah. At the forum, we recommend, and have used every time, a comment card. So we ask everybody who attends the forum to complete a card that speaks to what they think are the strengths and weaknesses of this particular candidate. And so we get a ton of input that way, which we try to consolidate, and I bring to you the very next day, along with the real thing, if you want to read them all. So first of all, you get, you get, and believe me, you will get a lot of comments. I, I'm not going to tell you that faculty or community members are not going to come to you and tell you what they think. Personally, professionally, I don't, would recommend you encourage that. The idea is for, especially if you went to the forum, you'll get a sense of what you thought. You will have, and I even tell the committee members this, you will have their application, you will see how they did in the forum, you will interview them and see how they do with you, and you will have, hear from me, we can't do it in paper, but you will hear from me, what is essentially a 15 to 20-page reference report. So you will have more information than anybody else has. If you want people to talk to you, that's fine. I would just urge you to be cautious about it, because unless, unless, how can I say this diplomatically? Unless you think that person's input is more valuable than your insights, when you have access to way more information.
That wasn't really the issue. The issue was to provide everybody who went to the forum the chance to express their views.
Oh, they will.
Directly to us, though.
Well, I.
And I felt like that was an important participatory element for both the community and, it was emails.
They did.
Yeah. We got emails from people. They didn't necessarily have to say who they were, but many of them did, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it took a long time. I actually just, literally, after it, after they were invited to email, I literally sat on my couch with a notebook, and so it was hours, and as the emails came in. But I did really enjoy it. I mean, but to me, but this is, as a trustee, I am, that's my, like, I, this is my commitment. This is, I've committed to do Angie emails, okay, good, let's do it. So it's not like I was like, oh, one more thing. It's my job to read and Google and do all of that, so. I did find it valuable, and I think the people that expressed their opinion, I think they felt good that they had the opportunity to do it. I see what you're saying, too. It could go either way. I certainly don't want to invite.
Why not both?
Huh?
Why not both?
Well, you could do it. I'm not saying you can't do it.
I don't want to invite extra work, but I feel like if people want to email and comment, go ahead, I mean.
It was set up electronically, so it was easy for people to do. It was not, it was easier than cards, because you'd have to redo, reorganize that.
And here's the other, and that's fine. So you expected them to do that after they went to the forum, that evening to email?
If they wanted to.
And they didn't all do it. It was mainly the internal college folks, and it was good, because I was like, wow, you really care about this college. And I actually, like, I was happy that they cared so much to write such a detailed narrative of what they thought, what they felt, and.
So when they did that, they sent it to all of you, I hope, not just one of you or two of you?
Well, it would probably need to be some sort of like a Google form or something.
No, they sent it individually. It was my email wasn't on everything.
So I'm really cautioning you against the individual stuff.
But in the, for this next one, I think it totally makes sense what you're saying, and just do it as a Google form.
But you do it as, so we could set up electronic way of writing input to the whole board. Because I think it's really important that everybody hears the same thing. That's part of the level playing field. And some people may not want to email you, so we could still make the other option available.
Yes.
And go from there, and that's fine. We can find a way to do it. But I, what I was, the reason I winced at first is, I hate to see people, I'm not naive about campus politics, okay? And I know that whatever we decide, there are certain folks who'll do whatever they want to do. And they're going to bend your ear, by phone or otherwise. That said, the integrity of the process is that we're trying to have a level playing field. Everybody has access to same information. And we could get both by simply saying, if you want to respond to the group email, here's where we are, however, I know the IT people can figure that one out for us. And if they choose to do that, they can. And then some may choose to do the other, simply because they don't want to be identified. And we're doing, and we're doing, it's a SurveyMonkey that we're doing right now, with, in terms of the opportunities and challenges. And the only thing that I don't like about it, in that case, is the anonymity. Because I used to have them all send them to my email, and that got hard. So, but, but I, so I sacrificed that way. But that said, it's different when you're at your stage and what you're getting. Curious, how many people do you think you heard from? Just ballpark.
At least 40-something?
Yeah, I was going to say well over 50, maybe even 100. It was substantial.
I mean, they're all still here. They're all still on the email, because Gmail doesn't delete anything.
So I think you've heard the concerns and thoughts, yeah, maybe.
I don't know. Can I ask, I mean, Liz, did you guys feel that that was helpful? I mean, we don't want to add extra work either, but did you guys feel that after the forums, Priscilla, that it was helpful? Or did it not make a difference? Huh? People like doing that, yeah, so. People like doing that, yeah, so. I would, I don't mind extending that courtesy and sitting and reading it all.
And I, I think the forums give a different side of the person that the committee has not seen. So even committee members who have interviewed all and gone through the screening may see new things.
Well, to your point, my direction to the committee today was please try and come to the forum. And when you fill out the comment card, I told them about the card, please sign it with your name and say you were a committee member. Because they do bring a specific kind of set of skills that others don't have. They've seen the application, they've seen the interview, they know if they turn the story around 180 degrees from when they saw them two weeks before from that day, only the committee members will catch that. So we were trying to capture what you're talking about there as well. But that's fine, we can do that, that's not a problem. And then I would just hope, I guess two things, if you're going to do that, that you all take a quick look at them, not just a couple of you. And then secondly, and I, and I hope this is diplomatic enough, so I'll try to say this carefully, please come in with your open mind as a member of the board to look at all the pieces because forums should not be a deal breaker. And forums should not be the reason you hire them or the reason you don't. It's one part of the process. I have had really slick forum presenters that, and one comes to mind, it was early in my career, that everybody just was odd. And then we knew the person had some issues and I'd warned the search committee that there was some concerns. When we dig, digged, dug, when we tugged much deeper and I had to share with the board what we found, the board said, okay, well, no way, we can't do that, we have to go with somebody else. Had it been based on the forum, they would have gone with them. And on the other hand, you may have somebody who's kind of quiet. I mean, I know they have to be the face of the college, so they can't be too quiet, but there are other leadership styles and they might not win over the group in that hour. But they don't say anything bad and then they spend a couple of hours with you and you're absolutely sold on them. So just kind of keep it open.
Thank you. I think this has been very, very helpful. It was a good session. And I think we, I hope you, I hope you feel like you got the necessary information from us. And before we conclude, does anybody have any quick question for Pam?
One more procedural question, which is on the 25th, which is the day where we interact as a board with these folks, is there going to be a time when we interview as a board each one of them?
Yeah.
Okay. You didn't mention that, you were talking about lunch and breakfast, so I just wanted to.
Oh, no, you have an interview with candidate one and then some food. Interview with two and then some social. You know, eat, oh, no, absolutely. Usually spend about an hour and a half in that interview and another hour in the informal environment. So you will have quite a bit of time with each of them. And so you need to block off your day and your evening. Because if you end up with four candidates, we'll get done around four or five o'clock. Well, you know, you'll have nice breaks, but still, then, then we'll have the deliberations after that. So just block off the day and evening.
Okay.
And if you go home early, you won't mind.
Have you, first of all, thank you. You've been great. Have you ever had all the applicants and then the board decide that it was none of them were exactly the right fit, but they didn't want to go back out for a new search? Can the board have access to the pool?
I don't recommend it.
So just a whole new?
I say if you don't, if you can't settle on one that you're happy with, then I say reopen it. Reopen the search or continue the search technically because it's not done. Continue the search and then we go for a short time and we invite other people to apply if they wish. And we, in essence, we start over, but we condense it. And one of the things you have to decide at that time is whether you want the same search committee or not. Generally, they don't. Generally, they start over. If you start over, it's not really a good idea. For example, let's say the committee interviews seven and they send you three. And then you decide you don't like any of the three. If you reach down and pull up the other four, that is a pretty big insult to your 17-member committee. Because you're saying, we don't trust you, we don't like your judgment, whatever. It's, it's totally a loss for you in terms of your relationship with that committee. And besides that, you're probably not going to want them. I mean, there's, there's a reason they didn't get forward.
I guess my question was more like something we would pay for a whole other search, is that what?
No, we, we talked about, I think we talked about that in there, about if we, no, you don't pay another full fee, no. We go back out. What we do if you reopen it, we just charge for direct costs, like the visits and the way, but no, you don't start.
Sort of like à la carte.
I have, I'll tell you what, the only ones I have had that that ever happened has never been with a board. It's been when I did a campus president and my contact was the chancellor. The chancellor was making the decision and the chancellor decided, I think I had one, two, I'm trying to remember if Helen was one of them. No, yeah, she was. Yeah, she was. She was one of them that said, let's go back out again. And so we did a condensed version and did it quickly. But it's, it's only been a chancellor and I've had that with, three times with a chancellor, never with a board. And I thought a lot about that as a former chancellor. I decided that we are hard to please. You know, that it's, this is the person we're going to work with every single day and, you know, and so maybe we were more picky, I don't know, whatever. In, in two of those, I can't remember the third one, two of the three, the issue had to do with internal candidates. So it was more complex than what I'm saying, can share here. So anyway, if it happens, we help you, we condense it, we don't charge you all over. But I tell people throughout this whole process, I will say to the committee, I will say to you, I will say to your co-chairs, to say to anybody that bugs them, honor the process. We now have a process. Honor the process, let it play out. And if at the end the board isn't happy, then we, we go back out. And if, if the committee gets to the place where they absolutely positively cannot send you more than two, but the two are really, really good, then I'm going to be consulting with you folks and saying, what do you want to do? Because if you go back out, you will lose those two good ones. They won't hang around. So then you have to weigh it and part of it is, do we want to, how good are they? They're excellent. Are they in another search? Yes. Uh-oh, we better interview and, you know. But if you make that decision after you've interviewed, well, then you know that those people are off the table and so then you definitely have to go back out and recruit